And here it is. Oh my God, is it?
Is it going to get there? Is it recording? I can't see if it says get you or not.
It said it was recording.
Okay.
Long time.
By the way. Try. By the way, Alex.
Yes.
There's a copy of the invitation to the Upper Hudson Library Systems annual dinner and a copy of the Equity Challenge.
Right. Yes. We had that too. Thank you. And thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So now you have. Row ones. Um, okay. So we are going to start the May 4th, Chief Board of Prestige's meeting. Um, do we have any public comment?
It depends on where I show up at this agenda, if I use this public comment or whether I wait till 11:00 to use the public comment.
Okay. Well, you want to think about this now before so we can continue on?
Well, just do a real quickie. We uh were approved for $20,000 from the Troy Savings Bank Foundation for the Timber Wall and the ADA Ram. Um, we have commitment from an anonymous donor to give us um $10,000 if we could match it. And with the idea that the money would go towards Lansingburg. In the next week. Any questions about that?
Oh, no. Sorry. I was just exclaiming.
Okay.
But there was no time period. Um, we have drafted the 2024 appeal. And it's based on two premises, good news and not such good news. And the good news are the statistics having to do with increasing circulation, all the things that came out of Paul and the staff's annual report in terms of usage of the library. And uh not such good news was the fact of the inundation of Lansingburg. And then the other part of the good news is that um the public has stepped forward in terms of already giving some money, the wall has been built. They are doing a a mural. One of the staff here is doing a mural on the on the wall which um has Moby Dick as part of the characters, bringing in Melville as the, you know, the home of Lansingburg. Uh, and it's um and the other good news is this $10,000 offer of the match for Lansingburg. So that's the thrust of the annual appeal and I hope that it will go out next week. The other thing is between now and when you get together again, we're having this huge sale, weather permitting at Lansingburg with over a thousand books, which are all books that have been donated to the library. And so it's weather, it's um weather dependent. We have the seventh, seventh is the date and the following Saturday is the eighth is the date.
Yeah.
And I always get it wrong. And the following Saturday is the rank day. It's going to be outside and in the book seller. Uh, the book seller will open for the first time since December on that date. Books will be pegged as they are in the book seller, a dollar for most things, 25 cents for children's books, et cetera. So we're working on getting volunteers because right now the books are in the warehouse. And engraved boxes. And what has to happen is they all have to be moved outside and arranged on tables and so. So.
How can, should people contact you to volunteer?
I think we're pretty good. I mean, I put out a call, particularly for the setup, we're pretty good. But any, um, what is going to require going forward is there'll be three stations with um with cashiers plus the books are not going to be in baskets or boxes like we do when we go to the farmer's market. They're just going to be on tables, you know, held by, uh, you know, what else is called? The whole books.
Shelves.
No.
Racks?
Book racks. Um, and so just helping people. Um, and we've been doing an enormous amount of publicity around it on social media. There'll be posters going up around town. Um, and the publicity has gone out not only to Troy links, but people who go to book sales. You know, there are all these people who frequent book sales. So I think I hit all the hotspots, I think.
Fabulous. Same video, brother.
If I may interrupt.
Yes.
Because because you have not stayed for the end of our very exciting meetings. A couple of times this has happened to me, but I I frequent a lot of used books.
Yeah.
Uh, dealers in the area. Multiple people have told me how excited they are about the book seller reopening. So just wanted to pass that along.
And so to the people you know, get them to this sale because the goal is to get rid of books. The goal is not to make movies.
Okay.
I mean, you know, we'll make $600, which, you know, we we make like a thousand, you know, a hundred dollars when we go to the farmer's market. The goal is to move these 900 books. Or a thousand books. And so they will go, the ones that are not sold will go to Better World Books and to the book warehouse that's in Rotterdam. Um, but it's really to, because there's been a glut of of donations of books to the library.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'm mainly early.
You're more than a one.
And you know, we're under a kind of tight schedule, by the way, because we're down two and we're going to lose one by seven. So we're going to try and focus and there'll be a little bit of tweaking of this agenda, by the way.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. So we're going to be focused. Um, the treasures report, please.
Um, two things that we need the board to act on. One is to approve the bills of, so I have. $328.10 and 10 cents.
Marie, would you mind repeating?
10 cents or one cent?
100.
10 cents.
Okay. $197,000. $197,328. Got it. Cool. Thank you.
So I say move?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The second item coming out of the Finance Committee is that our T bills are maturing. And the Finance Committee recommends that half of that be reinvested at three months. But um term and half be reinvested at six months. And that's to have the T bills maturing at different times. So every three months. And the rate is 5.919% for three months and 5.16% for the six months. And that's a little bit lower than we invested in last time. But still.
Pretty good.
Still good.
Yeah.
And not very different from the what was quoted in material that Ellen sent out.
With which ones?
Gotcha. But I wasn't sure if that was talked about in committee or not.
I so I say move that we do that.
All in favor?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, we did discuss it. We're going to be looking to it further.
Okay.
We need to do some more research and everybody needs to read it and
Yeah, we can, you can fill me off.
Yeah, it was very basic.
There's sufficient time to consider it.
Yeah.
About T bills.
Yeah.
We know this month.
So, um. I don't know if they came in. All right. So consent agenda. We do have the approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 9th. Um, we do have an outreach committee report and we have the president's report. I make the
So sorry, no, no Upper Hudson?
No. You know, for Hudson and the building committee meeting is coming.
If I may comment now, is it appropriate for me to comment now?
Well, are you going to pull something or are we?
I've got nothing to pull. No, I just want to make comment.
Okay. Do we have a second for the consent agenda first?
Sorry, I'm a little confused.
Okay.
Is the building, is the building committee included in the?
No. Yeah. So a motion's on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Yeah, I apologize for not having building committee meeting minutes prepared in time for today's meeting. I apologize. But they are in the works. I will have them out shortly. It's been suggested, or I think I've heard that building committee meeting reports have not been included in the agenda for the past several months. I think that's what I thought. I heard you say. I'm asking for clarification. So.
No, wasn't, I think you commented that you thought that something, some, one of these months had not been submitted and approved. And I went to the packets and one month in February, it had not been submitted to the packet. So we could not approve it. Every other month, there has been a building committee report, which was added to the consent agenda and approved.
So at least one, then perhaps two.
Just one.
Well, four have been submitted in the past four months.
Yeah.
And so I'm hoping that there are four that have been entered into the record. Three. We met twice in January, so.
Okay, maybe I have to look back and see through to.
There should be four minutes and then it's distributed and sent out to everybody. I do have them here in case anyone wants to check the dates, et cetera. But there should be notes from the third of January. The 24th of January, the 28th of February and the 27th of March. And if any of those are missing, please, I'm happy to resend them to everybody. They haven't previously sent out.
Let Thomas, the person that we would make sure that's goes into the consent agenda next month.
And yeah, and I apologize for not having them ready for this month. That's my apology.
No, no problem. So we have a motion. We've had, the second, we've had the discussion. All in favor? Okay. So in our regular agenda, the first thing we're going to do is approval of the Director's Evaluation Questionnaire. We're going to go through the approval process because there were some questions and additions after our last meeting, which were entered, which were added. Um, everyone got a chance to look at it. Uh, no one sent any negative comments back. But we should go through the process of approving it because we'd also like to make it part of the search package in the future. So a director could see what we were kind of looking at. Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Yes.
I thought we'd, and though I've not been part of the committee on this here, but I thought there was discussion about whether we would pull this evaluation questionnaire and use it as a basis for the search committee work.
As we just said.
Well, that's not, that's not quite the same. I thought we were going to pull it. Now you say you want to formally approve it. That sounds like the opposite.
No, we're not pull, we want to use it, not pull it, but use it as an instrument in a questionnaire as an approved piece that says this is what the board is interested in. This is how we're evaluating the director and these are the things that are important to us.
These are, I would say, some of the things that are important to us. I don't, I would hate to see this being used as the sole basis.
It's a part of the packet. It's part of a, there's going to be many layers to this. So it's not the whole thing, but we wanted to have it approved. So and we had also discussed the approval process at our last meeting where we were going to do an informal thing so we could actually implement it, but with hopefully the understanding that it would go through a formal approval, which is what we're trying to do today.
Past months.
So much.
Okay, I think that I'm okay if we approve that at this time. Uh, with the caveat that we would, of course, review it before we do it again and go through the review process again.
Oh, yes, of course. It's, it's a it's an evolving entity. It is a living, almost a living thing. All right. So we have the motion, the second, you have more discussion?
Question. So wouldn't the evaluation actually fall, fold into the job description rather than being, I think, better?
You want to say something?
No, um, person said the February and the second January minutes in one email.
Okay, something else. Um, will you say it's folded into a job description too, but it's still an instrument that we can show someone and say, this is what the board has approved as a document um for usage in evaluating a director. Again, it just becomes another piece of this is who we are, this is what we like, want, whatever, whatever verb you would like to use. But we still need to approve it now, whether or not.
Can we do provisional approv- improvement?
So this contains the component about succession planning and
The way we we finally discussed it in the end, absolutely it's in there. It's towards the end. And we discussed the issue of succession planning as being a board duty. But the rest of it is record keeping and having staff keep good records for, et cetera, et cetera. Can't remember what number question that is. This is exactly what everyone that said it. He thought you liked it.
A change.
Okay. I think it's number 59. And the other part was 57.7? Excuse me. Professional growth?
My understanding, what, what's the?
Oh, whether um I had been the person who had advocated for
Yes, a question about
Success and planning and institutional knowledge.
Yes.
Being passed on. So the question is whether what was put in was adequately addresses it. So I'm, I'm I'm not.
What would you, what else would you like included ideally?
Well, I don't know that I necessarily agree that succession planning is just, is the board's responsibility. Certainly for succession planning within uh those positions lower than the director. That I would see that it's a director role and even in terms of the, of a succeeding director. I can see a director playing a role in that.
I, I would imagine it would have to be a collaborative process with the board. Is that letters in this, but the part about it being the board responsibility? That's not not in this. Yeah.
That's not our direction.
So I would, I would see you know, it appropriate as part of the evaluation of the director rather than being excluded.
It's always this is the open for negotiation, discussion further for next time.
Always. I'm sure it's going to be, this is not a permanent fixture.
Yeah, I, I, I see what the purpose is of doing the exercise of moving it. It's not going to be memorialized.
Yeah.
No, it's been never been executed. It's never been applied and it'll be revisited before it gets executed again. So we memorialize, but I don't see what
And memorialize it within the minutes. So we have and there's an advantage to that.
And, and there's also a Yeah. But I, I think approving it doesn't, doesn't preclude it being worked on in the future.
Yep.
I, because I, because I also don't think, obviously, we're not literally carving it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have the time. It's like 50 pages.
Um, we have the motion. We have a second. We had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? I didn't see if you
No.
I said I.
Oh, sorry.
And the affirmative.
Okay. So all in favor? Okay. So we're going to skip to what is number three, make that number two. Um, we are going to approval of the 2023 annual report. This is a must. Yes, it was already submitted. We are doing this retroactively, but we still need to approve the annual report, which has been in the Dropbox, discussed in the last month and sort of discussed like month before. So I am going to make the motion that we approve the 2023 annual report.
A second.
A second. Do we have discussion?
Okay.
Okay. Hearing none. All in approval?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, let's see. What should we do? It's so much fun.
Lansingburg?
We can do Lansingburg. Do you want to do, ready for Lansingburg?
I could do.
Yay. Let's do that. I changed that. Like I said, there's some tweaking.
Thank you. I called this.
Certain person didn't want to read, retell it.
Um, a couple of different things with Lansingburg. We had talked about contacting our attorneys in an effort to pursue um Hanover Insurance Company. Um, I talked to Ellen Bach from Weyman Oldsmen and Hannah about the possibility of a lawsuit against Hanover Insurance. And she did say that they would um take the case, so to speak, but it's not really their forte. Um, they don't have a lot of cases involving insurance and they just don't think necessarily that they would be the best choice.
Did Ellen make a recommendation?
Well, I'm going back to our um independent agent who originally had said that he had an insurance company that worked well with this kind of a case. And so he's going to actually check back with Hanover with the idea that we're preparing this. Which very often kind of can shake the tree, so to speak, and they might reconsider, but that's not necessary. That's not necessarily going to happen. Uh, and then get back to me with a recommendation on a company that does this very thing.
Excellent.
Let's see. Uh, so that's where we are with Lansingburg and the Hanover case. I'm, we'll point out that um at this point, um uh, quick response has billed Hanover Insurance for the mitigation work. Because they had worked with the insurance company in getting approvals and they went along. And so the bill with the work is with the Hanover Insurance Company. So going forward, I think that uh one of the best things, one of the best passed right now would be to apply for a public library construction grant for the renovation of the Lansingburg branch. Now that um portal opens in mid-June. Um, so by now we do sort of have to have an idea of which way we want to go. Um, and I suggest that our next public library construction brand do that.
And
Again, they've got, well, just a second. They've got additional funding this year. So there's more in the pot and um at the same time that we put in the grant, the renovation of the YPS space, we include a, a complete no roof on the, on the branch as well. So it was a combined rent. Um, I did get, it was only today and I haven't really um got back to them and it, they kind of a very abbreviated estimate for um another estimate for the ramp. Um came out of 15,000.
Oh, no.
But I don't have any description of the materials, et cetera, that they plan on using. So it's still a bit tentative.
They did say ADA compliant. They said ADA compliant.
They did, but you can put up a bunch of boards and make it ADA compliant. So I got to double check with them and compare that with our initial estimate of 19,000 and some change. But yeah, it's good. We've got a little competition. So.
Always healthy.
Other than that, Lansingburg is open and moving right along.
Thank you, Paul.
Do we want to go through the motion of using our construction grant application for this?
Um, yeah, I don't, I wonder, well, yeah, it wouldn't hurt. Wouldn't hurt.
I mean, what else, the other choice is always the eight, the HVAC, but we can't really do the HVAC.
Well, we already did.
Because we already did that. And unless we have a whole different aspect of it. I talked to Tim too. I know you did. I talked to him. We can't use it. We can't go there again.
No.
So that's out.
Not for now.
Right.
Roof. Sorry, I'm just thinking of pending projects. Roof, we have money for. This roof, right? Grant?
Yes.
Windows, that's where that money came from. Okay.
Your money's went to the track.
So, well, what if we do succeed in getting the insurance company to pay? What would happen with the?
You throw a party. I guess.
But we, well, that's not, that's, that's
Yeah, the insurance company might, yes, pay the past bills is for the temporary fixing of the roof. It's not for fixing any new work, new work.
I'm not referring to the roof. I'm referring to the restoration. So if the insurance company does pay, then what's the status of the grant regarding what was submitted as part of um the application for the restoration?
I don't think an insurance reimbursement would count as a separate funding avenue for a project we were worth, we're at money for.
Yeah, I agree.
Did you ask Ellen that question? We talked about that. Did you ask Ellen about that? And what did she say?
Not specifically, no. I don't.
She might know.
Which grant are you speaking of?
The one that that is being proposed.
This is a future grant. So I think we can, I don't think, I, I think we can tailor that grant to be comprehensive or broad enough to include any number of things at Lansingburg that need to be addressed. Whether it's part of the restoration, whether it's the roof, whether it's the roof structure, whether it's the permanent ADA access. There, I think there are plenty of things at Lansingburg that could use, and this is me speaking off the top of my head, uh, that could use some attention and even with a award from the insurance company for past expenses, I think there's plenty to do at Lansingburg that needs some attention on the capital project side.
Well, first of all, a good portion of it goes towards the mitigation anyway, to pay the insurer, pay the, a quick response. But the other thing is, in terms of adding the roof to the renovation portion of the building, um, you could also back up and um perhaps we could redesign um, you could also back up and um perhaps we could redesign that roof so that it doesn't act the way it does. And it, it, it's poorly designed because it was an attachment, the building itself is an attachment to another building. And the way that they did the roof, first of all, you have the, the um the general, the, the main roof with its skylight. And then you have these trenches that are EPDM roofing. And it's the print trenches that cause the problems, and we've had minor leaks before. Um, and there's almost no way to completely fix that.
Without sale, probably redoing the roof, I imagine.
Yes, yes, not just roof.
Yeah, so the main, I mean, you know, you could, you could say, it's minor, change the grant in a minor way, so that will cover maybe some redesign of the roof as well. So I don't think it's a problem.
I, I wasn't referring to the roof component. I was referring to the component to restore um the YPS.
We could just restore it a lot better. I mean, I don't, you know.
New floor, new ceilings.
Wall finishes, lights, you know. All the fancy stuff like that.
Or whether it could be repurposed as we repurpose the windows. Grant, excuse.
We haven't even applied.
No.
I thought we could write that grant broad enough to cover a wealth of things that could be done at Lancingburg. I don't think we need to dial in so specifically that.
Well, at some point, we'll have to be a little more specific. Like, or I guess it will have to be kind of nailed down, um, because that's when we negotiate, upper Hudson. We negotiate what we distribute to the libraries. So, um, all right, so I think we have an idea of the motion. I make the motion that the director be authorized to you can fix my words, um, use the twenty twenty-five New York State Construction Grant, apply for the New York twenty twenty-five construction grant um for, for the Lancingburg Ranch. I'll leave it broad.
General.
I'll leave it broad for now, but that gives you the authority to write it. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
A second motion. Second. Okay, any more discussion?
We authorized grant applications in the past?
Yes. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. It depends on quickly to be in, but we have done it, and I think that's part of one of these things. It says, if required or necessary, we might as well do it. It can't hurt. Um, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
One thing to get that done is I've got to get estimates in the next few months and, you know, so. Yeah.
Okay, um, the salary schedule and the budget.
Okay, um, I did not, um. Put the actual schedule in your packet, so might have to have paper. You know, our uh packet is fifty-nine pages.
Well, we didn't all get paper. We didn't all get paper packets.
Um, I bring this up now because I had said that I would work on a budget um for twenty twenty-five uh before parting company. Um, to give you an idea, and certainly you can make all the changes you want after that. So the budget would start with the salary lines. Um, and now in your packet, I have a copy of the twenty twenty-four budget with the changed salary lines for twenty twenty-five. Now, that didn't change anything else yet. What I did with the salary schedule was to take the salary survey that we had compiled, which was made up of area libraries of similar, um, similar to our own, and also some statewide libraries as well. And I took the salaries and figured the averages for, for example, library assistants. What is the average, you know, not only locally, but uh, you know, for other similar libraries in the state? And I roughly, I used that number roughly to plug into the salary schedule. So the library assistant average um combined, um, I came up with a number of seventeen dollars and forty cents. Okay, so I did the same thing.
Can I ask one question? I think, I think I might not, um, did you normalize this to like the population that's served by the library at all?
What's that?
Did you, did you like normalize the wage to the population that they serve representative to the population of Troy? I might just be overcomplicating in my head. That's.
Yeah, I kept that in mind, but um, you know, no, I didn't do a lot of, you know.
All good.
No. Um, we've got to compare with other libraries of similar size in the business. I mean, you know.
Locally competing.
Yeah, cuz.
Not like, you didn't do your survey in New York City.
No, no, no.
You do.
We don't do anything downstairs.
So you're talking about our region and the regions we're comparing with. You're not also looking at Malone or something like that.
Nothing past New Falls.
Thank you for.
Okay.
Makes, makes sense.
You should, you should see Long Island if you want.
Oh, yeah.
No library.
So anyway, I did those averages for each position, library associate, librarian one, librarian two, et cetera. And I came up with averages for um, you know, this area and, and some of the rest of the state. So I take those numbers, and it's not an exact number. I, you know, combined local averages with state averages, which tended to be, you know, not exactly the same, and came up with something towards the middle. Um, so I'm confident that what this step one is, is pretty much starting pay around.
Um, does this include benefits or is this just, is this take home or is this include benefits insurance?
No, this is just the salary, not benefits, right, yeah. Um, okay, once you have that number, um, then you go forward with all the other steps. I mean, it's based on your starting pay and um I go ahead with three percent across the board of twelve steps.
Can I ask, can I ask you a, um, do you have a very, and this is, this is something I can always come and talk to Joy about.
Sorry, I went up four percent. I'm sorry. I'm.
Great, um, do you have like a rough idea of which employees populate which steps we're at? I imagine it's fairly heavily weighted.
Well, that's the next step.
Okay.
In this whole process. Now, the next step, if you change your starting pay, you can't leave everybody where they are. You have to compensate based on where they are now, and a lot, quite a number of people are pretty close to starting pay because we've had a reasonable turnover. Um, and so in some cases, we move them up a couple of steps so that we don't interfere with people with less experience coming in. Um, okay, once that is done, and then you, you're doing, you're doing that basically with everyone. Um, you know, to move people equitably within the salary structure, the new salary structure. Um. So what does that mean? Salary alone, you're looking at probably about a thirteen, thirteen percent increase across the board. That's, gives you from nine seven, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand to one million, one hundred and one thousand, you know, that we have at the new number. Um, when you get down to the bottom, the whole salary and benefit line comes out to be about eight percent increase. There is one particularly difficult thing to budget, and that's retirement. We don't hear from New York State until they actually bill us, which will be March of twenty twenty-five.
Uh, is there any way we could get a rough estimate?
They'll tell you, yeah.
Okay.
And what they're saying now is be similar to what we have. So a similar it. Um, but also in retirement, don't forget, we uh much of the twenty twenty, or some of the twenty twenty-four year, we had budgeted not only New York State, but some contribution through TIAA. So that's why that budget is a bit larger. Um. And so what I did budget now is just what I expect the bill from New York State to be. So you would be with, you make these salary changes and, and everybody expressed an interest in a new salary schedule. So if you make them, if you do it that way, uh, you'd be looking at about an eight percent increase in, in the salary and benefit line. Um, I did the salaries first because it's our biggest part of the budget. It's the biggest impact. And um, once we say, okay, we want to do this, we want to incorporate, we want to make our salaries more competitive, um, I can construct the rest of the budget for June. So that's why I did that.
Thank you so much, Paul.
Okay.
I appreciate, I appreciate you putting all that together.
People have particular areas in this budget that they want to discuss, look at, have highlighted?
Um, couple, couple things. I think that we always look at materials, budget, um, and, and try to improve that. Um, and it's something most people are interested in, of course. We also would like more money in the maintenance and building area. Other than that, it's a lot of estimates based on what our suppliers tell us, like healthcare or health insurance. Uh. New utilities, we haven't really discussed that with our utility editor yet.
And this does not include?
It does not. It does not include the community relations position.
Um, do you be willing to make a mock-up that does include that?
Uh, yeah, I could, I could, I could throw that in. See, the determination here is, what's the tax lesson?
Yeah, I, I would just be.
That's the bottom line question.
Yeah, of course.
Um, so I could um include some figures as to what that would mean. Again, it's, it's, it's a two-way thing. It's, it's, the actual position salary would be forty thousand. That's for full-time. Um, you'd have to throw in something in terms of benefits. Um. And it's also an, another case where um as I said a long time ago, I find it a little difficult to pick what hours this person is working. I mean, you know, the minute you pick hours, you're gonna have an incident when you're if the person's not there, you know, it's, without hiring two people, you can't cover the hours, so. But I can give you an idea, you know, of the expense. That's why I said originally, it's like eighty thousand dollars if you're gonna cover.
Um, and just, just on the topic of their hours, I imagine that is something that would be um figured out essentially on a rolling basis. I imagine we would kind of consult with uh local libraries, um, kind of collate our incident reports, just kind of, I, I feel like the first approach would be like data-driven, just see when do we experience the most incidents, try to base it off that and then work from there. I imagine it's not something that we would just like hire this person, set it, forget it.
We should both like, we're focusing on this one.
Yes.
So that's.
Yeah.
That's what make that.
Yeah, I think um, yeah, yeah, anyway.
Um, understanding with the budget implications of that would be, would be viable to help and to confirm which way we go. And the details, we'll have to work out the details, of course, as we move forward. Thank you for pulling all that together.
Okay.
So we're gonna move on to, who was number six?
Oops.
It is six. It says six, but it is really now gonna be five.
You see, I have to go way back. I'm, I'm way over here.
Okay.
And it's, it's very small.
Five or six. I get this one.
Draw me through a loop of this.
Oh, retiring?
Whoa, 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 first I'm hearing.
First I heard that.
There was somebody I had to talk to. Anyway, um, just, just to make a little announcement, we missed them. Hope I'm speaking for most of us, if not all of us. So on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Paul Hickok, Director of the Troy Public Library for thirty-four years and a member of staff for thirty-six in total, announced he was retiring as of July twenty twenty-four. Most individuals in the world of libraries, what this would never happen, as he is so closely connected to the world, that world, and to this library, but happened it did. This, of course, means a huge change in his life, if he can remember life not in this library. One thing, though, that has not and will not change is Mr. Hickok is a quiet man who shuns attention. However, as monumental as this life change is, attention must be paid. So this is an occasion for which needs, that needs to be noticed and noted. So congratulations, Paul. Enjoy your time away. However, while you stay away. And please enjoy your send-off, because more is to come. We will try to keep it simple.
Please.
Yeah, congratulations, Paul.
Thank you. Evelyn, that was very well stated.
And thank you for your service and leadership and uh, uh, I'm saying, tender, uh, your care for this organization.
And you know, the party isn't for you, it's for the others around you.
There's gonna be a roast scheduled, mom.
That's a messy feels he's been. No, thank you.
Oh, no.
Hopefully that wasn't true.
Except.
We do need to accept your resignation.
Oh, okay.
So I, I take on this difficult responsibility of making the motion that the Board of Trustees of the Troy Public Library accepts the resignation of Mr. Paul Hickok as of July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second motion.
Is there any discussion? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
I hope you find some time to go to Spain and Italy again.
Oh, yeah. Um. And hopefully the New York State retirement system will finish the paperwork by next year sometime.
And that civil service will get it all done right.
It takes a while.
Yeah, well.
Going to my second year waiting for my final determination. They had to check there for the interim, right, when it was supposed to be. But they're, they're so backlogged, the final calculation can take a while.
Well, they said they told me that um in order to reinstate my tier-one status, it would take two years. Um, they've been working on it a year now.
I didn't think that was possible. Because of the tear crease thing.
You what?
You found a way to do it?
Yeah, once you're in, you're, you're in, you stay in, I believe.
Well, yeah, there was some, some question about that, if you can go back anyways.
Well, no, I get, I get credit for working in Binghamton. I had six years at Binghamton. Which is when I was a tier one.
But they now have to find someone who knows anything about tier one who hasn't already retired.
Right, they don't know anything about tier one.
Actually, I think I know it's gonna be working on that file eventually.
So with apologies, we're gonna go on to the next one because again, we have. Certain time crunch. Um, directors. Search.
Evelyn, uh, just before you get off, uh, is there anything? That we're gonna discuss that maybe weren't going into the executive session?
I do not believe so. If there is, stop me, we'll hold it off and table it until the end of this, so we can. Not interrupt the rest of the meeting, is that work for you too? Okay.
I'm trying to read mine over here.
Okay. So um, there is a brief synopsis of some of the. Work done, um, it went into the packet and it should be also online with everything else. Uh, the public libraries. Director search update. As of today. Um, I don't know if people have any questions, it's not something I put in the consent agenda, this is not. Upper approval, it was just a matter of putting everything. Into reports, so people know, but I will go over it real quickly for those who might not have been able to read it. Um, several steps have been taken by the board, we've had discussions with Paul about the transition with many more to follow. We've contacted uh Tim Burke, Executive Director of Upper Hudson Library System, who sent us much material on the search. Um, and had, we've had several. Global conversations with him also. Um, he will be coming to the next committee's meeting on May twenty-second, is agreed. Um, now he's existed many, many libraries through this process, several of them in this last year, year and a half. Yes.
Do we also want to mention that the, the board is formed committee?
Oh, you got that, okay, thank you.
Um. By the way, I'm gonna put this as an aside, especially Suzanne is not here and she is Chair of the Committee. Um, if people have questions. Or comments that they want Tim to discuss, if they could, if each of us could please send it to everybody else. I think that helps for other questions and. We can possibly, if necessary, send Tim some of these ideas in advance, so he is prepared.
Maybe we can, no, I'm just like, maybe we can uh. Uh, just, just thinking for Zan's benefit, maybe set like a, we're meeting next Wednesday?
That is a twenty second.
Maybe we set a deadline of like next Monday.
Next Monday?
So, just so we collate it, send it to Tim, I know, give him, give him a whole one day to digest it, if we have pressing questions.
He's good.
I believe it.
Um, does that work for everybody? Okay, so by Monday? And the more we see, sometimes I know some of your comments made me think of other comments, it's very helpful.
Yes.
Um, great. So uh, Tri-Civil Service has been contacted with.
Uh, is this in regards to the temporary director?
In regards to anything and everything that they might have to do with this process. From Paul's contacting them and doing his paperwork. With him to what our options are, to how we do the posting, you name it, they've. They've gone through it and I'm sure there'll be more conversations with them too, and I think the last thing we'll do is talk about the temporary, okay? Okay. Um. We had an open conversation about the qualities desired for the position. Um, and having gone through the process of revising the director's. Evaluation questionnaire, we've already been considering some of those attributes. So we did list them and then we did prioritize that list, which Zan has right now. Um, we discussed the. Tri-Public Library Stan's input in this process. Uh, both written surveys and oral conversations have been discussed and both may be used. Uh, draft survey is being prepared. We've talked about the committee makeup, I don't think we completely resolved this question, but we did talk about. Who and how we would make up this search committee. But right now it is the core of admin and then with other members of the board included. Um. People, they asked if we're getting the word out. So information has been shared with many of our partner, what I call our partner associations, so Nyla is aware. CDLC, the Capitalistic Library Council. Is aware, the Director's Association knows. Um, at least some of them informally have been advised of. Paul's retirement. Um, and even the New York State Librarian has been informed. She was also very shocked.
Okay, I do that, you want to include that as part of your?
Well, we're talking about professional association, so yes, he, uh, Mr. Hickok told the department heads, department heads have told their staff. So they, that's the part they know, we're trying to let them know what else we've been doing, since this has been, we promised them reports on our activities. That's an internal activity, so. Um, we do need to do one thing, and I know there were some questions raised in the letter by Carolyn Bacon, and I did respond to it. Um, our. Thought, and again, I did get some advice from. The person who is known as the expert in civil service matters throughout the system. And his advice was, do it, just do it, you do not want to antagonize civil service, and if they ask you to do it, you do it. It doesn't cost us anything, there is a copy in here of the actual form we submit. Thank you, Joy. Literally four pieces to it, uh, the number of positions. The requested position. Um, the location. And. Temporary permitted, and Joy's already filled out this beautiful piece of paper.
And there'll be a meeting. I believe it's twenty-second.
We have to get this in by Thursday for it to make the agenda for Tuesday, their meeting next Tuesday.
And she already sent it.
Oh, okay.
I didn't send it yet, I was waiting.
We were waiting for this approval.
Yeah, not yet.
Spoken and we thought it's best that we wait until we get the formal approval and then we can send it in.
Does this talk about full-time versus part-time?
No, they don't.
That's not.
No.
Part of this.
Nope.
It's just a position, they, they, we always have to establish a new position with civil service.
If we. And then when we actually filed the description with civil service, I imagine that's when we.
Well, they already have the description of the director's position.
Okay.
This is just having a, we don't even have to create a new director's position, they already have one.
Is this a full-time position or a part-time position, or it could be either?
Well, we discussed, now here's another.
I, 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 thank you, Paul, I think you said that.
Yeah, because all we did is establish this is the position. Recently, we established the uh, community relations thing.
Yeah.
But that was just the position, we don't have a person. And it's not, we didn't specify full or part-time.
So I'll go back to meeting from May ninth. We did make a motion to recommend the Board of the Troy Public Library. To create the position of a full-time temporary director with tri-civil service at a salary range of seventy to eighty thousand dollars paid weekly. A couple of things here is once, now that we have the correct form. Civil Service gave us such a perfect form, we gave that to Joy. Um, we do not have to put down the salary. We do um, not need to say full-time or part-time, and the other thing that Joy has made us aware of. Is we do not pay weekly, we pay.
You pay bi-weekly?
Bi-weekly.
My mistake.
That's none of this, so there's a way, a couple of ways that we could say we were amortizing, prorating this.
You don't get over seventy thousand every week.
No, 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 the idea is we could divide that by fifty-two and give them how many weeks. So it's, it's a matter of semantics, or we could just, as we remake this motion. That we say we are going to create this new position document. To meet civil service guidelines in creating a temporary director's. Position.
Can I, okay, can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Because that, the filing doesn't say anything about it being temporary, so the idea of what.
Where is it? I took it back.
Yeah, I believe I gave it back.
It could be in everybody's packet, yeah, it says temporary on the last comment.
Oh, I'm an idiot, that's my. But, so, so. I just, just because of my unfamiliarity with civil service, um. When is it set? The limits of something being a temporary position, is that, is that? When, is that, is that in the civil service system, or is that in the library's administration of that position?
Send another piece of paper. Saying that it's a permanent, th- th- this is a, now the permanent, so we have a director permanent.
Yes.
That's a, that's a position, that's what I hold.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we send a piece of paper over to civil service that says now this is permanent. The, the, filling the permanent position.
Okay.
And the, and the temporary position is open.
Okay.
Got it.
We don't have to fill this, let's say we get a candidate by July second.
Yeah.
Maybe. Um, we don't have to fill this, it's just creating it, so it's a, it's a.
So it just exists in the civil services?
It exists.
Okay.
We have other positions that aren't.
Civil service is mostly just pieces of paper.
Sometimes tracking them, I get a little discomfited, sorry.
That's okay. If we fill it, we get three months and then we can re-enlist for another three months and that's it.
Yes, okay, remember that.
And then it becomes, like, you bought it.
The um. Three-month duration starts when. When you apply for it, when you fill the.
Approved hire date, right? I assume?
Okay.
We can hire the person.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just an empty thing, so they don't know whether to start the three months.
Sure.
And if you don't fill it, it doesn't really exist, it just exists on paper. Like a paper string. So shall we rewrite this a little bit for the motion?
Do we need to re-proot it?
We haven't, we.
Oh, oh, sorry, that was a recommendation, yes. Sorry.
I have a question, I don't know whether to wait for the motion or, you mentioned somebody was working on a survey. Who's working on that?
You are going to Carolyn, isn't she?
Yeah, um. Carolyn and I haven't talked about it since the last meeting, so she's established, but we were going to survey, then the last time we talked, we were interested in just mostly having drop-in office hours. For members of staff to come.
Karen came back with an email with that topic.
About survey, so we're gonna, there's one.
Which makes sense to me because I was thinking, well, how do you get capture everything, so it's. Uh, accurately.
Yeah. It may suggest it both. Yep.
So you'll be working on the survey to do that?
As of, as of this moment, yes.
What does that mean?
Well, we're, we're interested in the staff's input um, in terms of our director search. Um, and mostly we're just figuring out the best vehicle, but doing that would be a hybrid mechanism of. Physical survey, so we have something to. Fully data on and just conversations.
What I don't understand is what the survey is asking. That's what they're going to create.
Be determined, we don't, we have.
Isn't asking about what the director should be or people's interest in being.
Oh, oh, what?
No, oh, no, this is not, this is not a job posting, this is.
That will, yes.
This is like, we discussed what qualities we would like, we were asking sample, they would like. Okay, yeah, oh, no, 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 it's getting input on the process and what they want in the director, it's only, I think it's important to get. Feedback from staff, I think we all felt that too. Oh, no. Uh, that's a whole different thing. Um, I'm gonna reword the motion. And we're gonna simplify, if that's okay, which is. Um, I'm making the motion to recommend the Board of the Troy Public Library to create the position. Of temporary director with tri-civil service.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Okay, Joy?
She's cool.
Yes, I'm here, I'm here, yes. Sorry, it just takes a second to unmute, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you so much, we just, we, now that we've approved it, if you wouldn't mind sending it into civil service, please?
Sure, I would love to do that for you.
I would love you to do that, thank you, and then we'll make it in their timeline.
Thanks.
Yeah, you got it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, so are there other questions or discussions or anything else on the topic of the director's search? At least for now.
Not at this time.
Not at this time, I know we're gonna be meeting and meeting and meeting and talking and working. Um. How about, if you don't mind, I will go to number eight, directors' reports.
Oh, my goodness, Evelyn, I just went to the.
Well, I'm, I was gonna make a. Jokingly chiding remark about jumping around numbers and doing minutes.
Oh.
You have nothing to apologize for, I'm just a fool.
We're trying to get this in the timeline, yeah, get, get this. Stuff out. Okay, sides will go fast. We did most of them.
What?
We did most of this anyways, I think your director's report, then one thing is going to be um, another item, so we can just.
You want me to do that?
Do, you know what, if you're that confused, we have a guest here.
Linking around a bit.
Okay, we have a special person here, we have Christiane Jebo, who is the head librarian of. Adult Services, who is also leading the. Equity Challenge, um. What shall we call it?
It's just the Equity Challenge, so I just wrote out a report, I don't really have to talk that much, I figured you guys can add it to the original of the minutes.
I think everybody.
You got it.
Does everybody have one?
So ultimately, there's a different challenges that um, the Equity Committee has, Upper Hudson has an Equity Committee. Um, and they, their focus is on inclusion and diversity, and so ultimately, uh, we have an oversight committee that met last week. On Friday, uh, we decided of the five um, options that are library-specific, we're gonna start with outreach. We felt like that was the best thing, and we went out into the community first and then be able to work on. Different things like programming or marketing that would then tie in with some of the um, information that we learned. Uh, ultimately, my two action items are to uh, send out a notice to the staff to see who's interested in participating on this segment of the. Um, Equity Challenge, and so that's already been done, and my next one is to create a timeline, we figured out roughly that. Of all the items that we have to do, it's about three months per item, that doesn't mean that we won't. Do it two at a time, because sometimes we'll set up things, but we may not be able to implement for a little while. Um, so just to give you a, just an overview that basically, we've decided on outreach and. We're gonna start probably in the next couple of weeks itself.
Kristi, can I ask you a sort of very basic question?
Sure.
I assume we're not talking about bonds and equities? So, can you see big equities in terms of?
So the Equity Committee was formed by Upper Hudson um, in twenty twenty, maybe in two thousand nineteen. They have a whole mission statement that's on the Upper Hudson website, and they can give you details about all of that, they initially started with uh, race relations, as most people do when they talk about diversity. Uh, and equity, and uh, realized that you can't talk about race without gender, you can't talk about race without disability, you can't talk about race without looking at other things. So then in twenty-one, I think it was, they rebranded themselves as the Equity Committee. And one of the things that they wanted to do was create something that was more tangible for libraries to um. Be able to have the tools that they needed to be able to become more equitable, so things like uh, in your collection, how do you go about evaluating it without having to spend scabs of. Dollars in order to see how diverse your collection is, if you're gonna move forward in that. Direction, so. Essentially, they came up with eight different items that were required, five of them are library-specific, the other three are more learning kinds of things, staff learning about diversity, equity and inclusion.
And that's on, that's on the website, right?
All of it's on their website, yeah. Yeah, exactly, and so within each section, there's a list of questions that need to, or tasks and questions that need to be answered and uh, implemented, and they also provide resources. uh, implemented, and they also provide resources in order to do some of those tasks depending on what it is, so that's kind of a quick overview.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I made an assumption, I apologize for that.
So how does that differ from the libraries that we're trying to?
Um, it has nothing to do with the library's outreach committee, it has to do with the library itself focusing on its outreach to be able to uh, connect with marginalized groups. Uh, people who feel like they have a barrier to coming into the library for whatever reason, and then being able to gather that information and then move forward and set um, strategies in order to mitigate that, so it could be that present, presenting to the board of trustees in the next long-range plan, maybe it becomes one of the you know, goals that are set, you know, within that, you know, so that's really what it's for.
So it's more setting the goals where the outreach committee is, is more operational?
Uh, I guess so, yeah, I mean, we already have outreach, uh, we have an outreach liaison on staff, which is Lori Drier. So she goes out into the community and does a variety of things, this um, is because it needs to be focused on inclusion, diversity, and equity, so that's this focus, so that way, um, when we work, we can have Lori understand what's going on, so that way, you know, it kind of connects with her work, and then in some regards, it may connect to the outreach committee, but right now, it's library-focused, not other committee-focused.
Are you aware of um, how many other libraries?
I am aware, not all of them are participating, um, so I can get you that list, but I would say it's somewhere between half a dozen and a dozen.
I think there might be eight, because there's four new, we were notified that there's four new libraries just last Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
And I, I think the last time they may have been four or five then, so.
Okay, I got a notice uh, from Judith saying, you know, welcome to, you know, thank you for participating kind of thing, and that's why I saw the libraries, but I didn't make an exact mental note.
I'm, I'm, I'm just glad people are participating, it seems worthwhile.
Some started early because they knew about it and they had signed up for it, because I think it was announced somewhere in mid-January to late January, but the deadline was, I think it was like August fifth or October, excuse me, April fifth, right, Paul, wasn't it like early April? That we submitted the form?
March.
Was it March?
Yeah.
That long ago, okay. Anyway, so we got in just under the wire um, and stuff, so, you know, so we'll do the best that we can and tackle as many things as we can.
Thanks for participating.
And, absolutely, so the, the great thing about this is that Upper Hudson has some additional funds, so every time you complete a task, then you get five hundred dollars, so the most we could get back is four thousand dollars for participating, so that's just an incentive that they have in there as well.
Fairness.
I know I'm not supposed to ask any questions, but I'm on the outreach committee. And it would seem that uh, some of the data that the survey is collecting would identify some of the questions about outreach and disaffected groups or uninvolved groups, I mean, again, the work of the survey be folded into the, that the outreach activities of this thing.
So the activities are, go to an event that is sponsored by a marginalized group, and that's like one thing. Um, you know, do some partnerships with some organization, you know, outside of what you normally do, so outside your comfort zone, possibly, things like that. There was nothing in the survey that had anything about someone's background, any issues on disability, it was really not that. Outreach survey that was done is really more a generic one in the grand scheme of like a focus on libraries. This is not a focus on libraries, this is a focus on the community, and then what the library might be missing in order to. So it's in tandem, and certainly when the um, work is done, we can certainly present it out to the outreach committee, obviously, it'll be presented out to the board of trustees and the staff and things like that, so they're calling it outreach, you know, that's their term, so, you know, for lack of a better word.
And Lori's on both.
Lori is on both, yeah, I'm also on both, yeah, exactly, so.
I think we'll be five of them.
Right, so basically, there's um, the Oversight Committee is Lori, um, me, as well as Evelyn, and so we'll be handpicking what we think is the next thing that we should move forward, and then trying to get as many staff, you know, involved, so that way they can be, you know, involved and feel that they're part of something. Future.
That's. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much. All right. So, with no confusion left, you're, you're number eight, director.
There's nothing else.
Well, no, you have some things on circulation and incidents and.
Yeah, you, um, some of it is um, in the report, uh, circulation has uh, been improving, um, I'm now comparing with twenty twenty-three because um, I don't go back to twenty nineteen before the pandemic, so based on the comparison to twenty twenty-three, uh, overall uh, circulation increased four uh, point six percent. But um, that's with Lancingburg closed for three months. Uh, because uh, circulation at the main library is up seventeen point eight percent. So with Lancingburg open now, we should see some serious increases. Um, at any rate, we're headed in the right direction.
Are you seeing that a leveling off that still? Has it that level, there was a surge when it opened, right?
What?
A surge when Lancingburg opened?
Well, they had circulation.
Surge, it was surge, and then you wrote last time that there was.
I think Paul.
This, the surge is primarily at main library, but a seventeen point eight percent increase in circulation.
I thought they were talking about the bird when they first opened.
Lancingburg.
I think that is people going to library, not necessarily checking out materials, from what I recall of that report.
But Lancingburg had circulation statistics for April. Incidents, there was nothing particularly serious, um. And so basically, um, yes. We had uh, eight incident reports for April, um. Several of them were health-related, a few were behavior-related, but nothing uh, that we had to call nine-one-one on. So that was good. We're gonna cover this uh, in-service day on Friday. Will be closed from nine to uh, we'll reopen at two o'clock in both locations. Uh, this in-service is primarily training, a staff or reviewing with staff, um, you know, what to do in the case of uh, when incidents do happen, um, we'll cover the code of conduct that we have in place. Um, talk about reporting, uh, talk about um, you know, lead and, and backup people in uh, different incidents and uh, how that works and how it should work. And then we'll be able to do some uh, uh, practice scenarios and um, that sort of thing, so it's really that sort of a practical thing for staff, and we have a lot of new people, and uh, it's good at this point to review what we do know and uh, what's in. So that's what we're doing.
Who uh, who leads the training?
Uh, Virginia's, has been doing a lot of work on this whole thing, and uh, she was gonna lead this um, uh, workshop with the practical uh, things that we have in place.
Oh, thank you.
Um, it's apparent, well, we're hoping to be done by uh, the middle of next month. So maybe before I leave, I can open the window? Get some fresh air, I don't.
There's some really big checks on our list of bills to pay.
That sounds like it's right on schedule, based on their initial estimates?
Yeah, pretty much, they had a couple of glitches, they have one glitch that they're working on, they um, there's, part of the reason for this problem that we do have is that under the structure of the parapets, there is iron bars that were designed to hold things in place, and those have rusted through. Uh, but we specified that they remove, you know, this particular iron bar, but they only removed this one little section that was, the arrow was pointing to, and they left the longer section in, so they gotta go back and pull that other section out, that's what they're working on now, they.
Tap pointed out then, that um, tap pointed out that this is not the intent, and the structural.
Lisa was here a couple of times, um, going through all this with them, and uh, so, uh, other than that, it's uh, going well. The annual um, um, Upper Hudson Dinner is coming up, June twelfth. We applied this year for two um, programs of the year, but we were turned down for both. But we'll do it again next year.
We'll, we'll get them one day.
We have got.
Oh, I believe that, I, I just have to.
I guess that's what I got.
Well, you mentioned that they removed the iron bars.
Yeah.
Are they putting new bars in?
I assume so, yeah.
And are they gonna be iron bars? Oh, that, I, that, again, I was curious.
I'll double-check, I don't, uh, they have to do the replacement, I don't know exactly what they're using now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, I haven't seen the documents.
They also can uh, apparently use the big, huge block that I saved for them.
One in the back?
Now it's in the front.
Oh, no, oh.
They brought it out. It's not usable, it's got, it stress cracks and they can't use it.
What are we gonna do with it?
Well, I don't know, what I'm gonna do.
In our fundraiser, I think that's an amazing idea. Unironic.
You have to pick it up yourself. Delivery.
Shipping not a glue.
Imagine the tipping fee for it?
Oh, I, I.
Yes, okay, yeah.
I think uh, I think it'll uh, become a planter.
Oh, just a hobbit's in the garden.
Yeah.
Um, the back, the monument to Paul.
I, I could, I'll chisel something.
I couldn't know he had all these talents.
A quick learn.
We are, by the way, um, as well, and I didn't put this in my report, but we're this close to getting the bids out for the roof. We may try to do that other thing, both, you know, um, with, um, we're gonna contract, um, Hector, tell him to put in a formal estimate um, based on, you know, the state um, guidelines. But then we wanna go ahead and bid as, as well.
You, you're talking about the uh, roof portion, or you're talking about the other portion?
The roof, yeah, the re-roof.
Any other questions, any other discussion, any other additions?
I told my guy.
I'm glad the parapet work is uh, moving along steadily, and even with delays, it seems like they're right on time. To be, to be seen in the next month.
Do we have any community feedback? Um, I spoke with somebody who voiced their um, pleasure at the range of programs that are being offered. It's a, it's a rather common commentary.
Yes.
Hmm.
My own mother did, when I showed her the library the first time last week, she was like, wow, you got so, that's some programs.
I was asked whether um, the friends are going to this community feedback, whether the friends were going to be part of the search committee that been in the park. Community members have asked me whether the friends are gonna be on the committee.
Did we skip over old business?
Yeah, we did.
Yes. We'll, we'll come back to that.
I was very good at pressing things off, not going back.
We're taking this for Kitchener's route.
Sorry, that was, that was a big. Um, all right, any other community, community, all new business?
I just wanted to uh, say it's not too early to start thinking about uh, recruiting for the board. That was coming up sooner or later, so just fun, be thinking about those things as we move. I don't even know who's running this, so.
You haven't checked?
I haven't, no, I haven't.
Would you like to know?
It was in, in the annual report, so I know you are, and Keith is, anybody else?
Carolyn, Carolyn.
Oh, so three, that's, that's a lot, so I think we hope that everyone will consider rerunning, but just in case. I've heard that some might not. Yeah, I also. I know. You said it to me in a fevered, no, okay. I'll never run again.
Any other old new business? Okay, then I didn't make a mistake in pressing it off.
We didn't, we didn't.
Can you look back? Um, public comment?
We're going to be looking for, you know, connecting with other people that possibly be trustees, um, you guys have diversity in terms of age and gender. We have nobody from like their walks of life, nobody with a disability that I'm aware of, and so we might wanna look at those sort of factions when you're considering.
It was a great idea, thank you.
Okay, any other communities? No, public comment? Hearing none? Any other things that we had not talked about, mentioned, brought up? Before we go to adjourn?
Uh, admin, special director committee, whatever we're calling it, that is next Wednesday. What is going on next Tuesday that you've alluded to?
Next Tuesday, the commission, the Civil Service Commission is meeting.
That's when they need to approve.
Yeah.
Yeah, they approve it.
There's.
You have a couple seconds ago, okay.
Just, I just wanna make sure all pieces are um, in my mind.
I had to back up my mind. Hit rewind. Um, so in that case, our date and time of our next meeting is June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, finance at five, regular meeting at five thirty. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, make the motion.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Question, um, to the admin meeting, it says TBD, or you guys wanted to meet, could we change the time?
No, we can, it's been.
It's TBD all the time?
No, when we have a, a time that we put it in there, but it's still TBD, so, it's a placeholder, I guess, that Joyce put in.
Oh, good.
No. That's one of the switching.
Thank you.
Wait, uh, can I? Can I go ahead and stop the recording? I just wanted, okay, let me just stop the recording.